I would like to welcome everyone.
...in progress.
There you go. I would like to welcome everyone officially to your village board meeting of May 31st. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for the victims of the Uvalde, Texas, school shooting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. These chairs. These chairs. And then you go backwards to go forwards. All right, let me start by introducing your village board. At my far left is trustee Graziano. Next to him is trustee Vic Forelli. Next to him is trustee Burek. Next to her is trustee Gomez, Jesus Gomez, deputy mayor. And next to me is village clerk Desiree Potman. And this is your village board meeting on May 31st. We are going to jump right into it with a public hearing, moratorium waiver petition for 19-7 Springs Road. This is a continuation of a public hearing that began at our village board meeting held on May 12th. The applicant is seeking relief from local law nine of 2021 for the property located at 19-7 Springs Road. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the application whereby the property owner is alleging that it suffers unnecessary or extraordinary hardship from the continued moratorium. This public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May 5th, 2022. Is the applicant present? That would be... Okay. Are you representing the applicant?
I'm an attorney. This is, uh...
Larry Hartman.
Larry Hartman.
There you go.
I was just gonna add, uh...
Go ahead to the mic. Introduce yourself.
Sir, do you want to pass this down? I'll just copy for you. While the information is being disseminated, introduce myself. My name is Rory Brady. I'm an attorney out of Middletown, New York. And in this particular case, I represent the applicant. It's my understanding that the applicant, uh, obviously has had a petition in front of this board. We were... They were here two weeks ago contemplating his petition was open for a public hearing, um, at which point I had sought to have the public hearing continued due to a conflict that evening that didn't allow me to be here and just add some commentary, um, to his petition and for the public. So the information that comes before you is a letter, one-page letter, and an accompanying stapled document. The letter is from the village of Curious Joel, and in sum and substance, it acknowledges that a 2014 agreement existed between the prior owner of 19-7 Springs Road, a gentleman by the name of Joel Klein. That agreement essentially states that the village of Curious Joel was, uh, going to, um, allow Mr. Klein to secure water from the village of Curious Joel. If you... I don't know if everybody's familiar with the exact location of this property, but it's about as close to the village line as you can get. Mr. Klein had struck that agreement with the village, but the agreement itself runs with the land. And I don't... I don't want to treat anybody as if they don't know a term like that, but layman's terms, what it means is it survives the ownership and survives the sale of the property. So essentially, it goes with 19-7 Springs, not necessarily Mr. Klein when he leaves the property. So I add that information to the petition, um, and the letter today was just to reaffirm that that agreement is not being nullified or challenged or sought to be challenged, that it's, uh, that it still exists and that they're still okay with tapping it. So that kind of segues nicely into adding to Mr. Hartman's, um, comments and certainly any comments from the public. You know, I wasn't... I'm not someone who lives in this particular area, and, uh, I've had the opportunity to object... objectively look at the documentation presented about why the moratorium exists, looking at the legislative intent, looking at the minutes, looking at things of that nature. So certainly don't want to act like I know exactly what the residents of the Woodbury, village of Woodbury, uh, want, but on paper, what it appears to be, this is as clear as today, it's black and white. This is about a water shortage, correct? So that is the legislative intent. There are some other caveats along with it, which, um, about talking about the unnecessary hardship and the like. So I want to start with the water, which is the primary concern. Mr. Hartman presented on behalf of the applicant, and he spoke about the existing well, proposed replacement of that well. And then there was a village engineer's report, which suggests at the very end that there's a potential that this could have an impact on the village of Woodbury's water. So that's about where I come into this situation. That's when it's presented to me because that engineer's reports suggest a possibility. So when I spoke to the applicant, I said, you know, let's look around for things that would ensure that maybe that possibility, we can eliminate that possibility. The wells, I'm gonna read into what the suggestion is, is that the increase in the rooms and, uh, that maybe that one well would affect the next well and so on and so forth, and the ripple effect would be the concern for the village of Woodbury. So upon further, um, diving into the applicant's property and the chain of title, it was discovered that it exists, that there can be a water line tapped into, which I think would, um, would assure everybody that the impact on the water supply of the village of Woodbury would be diminished. So starting at the top of, not to prioritize the concerns listed, but if you go back, and you guys are familiar with the law, and I'm trying to be as brief as I can, I want to make sure that I'm recounting how we got here properly. So we have the local law, and then we have the, um, resolution in December, which delineates six factors that the board would look at to determine whether or not the applicant meets the necessary, uh, um, factors to get a waiver. And then about a month later, there's the additional exemptions listed, which talk about a well, potable water, or tapping into village water source. So I'm working backwards from the January resolution, and I think, um, not only does he have an existing well, now he has another option, which would eliminate, uh, any potential concern about the water. As to the six factors listed in the December resolution, they're in, uh, paragraph D, and they're delineated one through six. Number one being the talking about the extraordinary hardship and what makes the applicant's property unique compared to other applicants, should there be other applicants. And my understanding is there have been other applicants, some denied, some have been accepted. And I'm gonna tie Mr. Oberlander's property to two of the properties that have been given this waiver. Um, I understand there's a couple of properties that have tapped into the village of Harriman, um, water supply, which I think certainly was a, uh, a large, if not overriding factor in their, um, being granted a waiver, and certainly I was not present at that meeting, so you can correct me if I'm wrong. And then there was another applicant whose hardship was granted, waiver was granted more on the hardship end of things, which related to a family member as well as some extenuating circumstances with the property itself. So I'm gonna... Mr. Oberlander's property is unique in the following. It is already... It's already an exist... It's an existing property with an existing residence on it. Um, it's not proposing new construction in the sense of adding a house to the dock... Well, it is a new house, so I won't... I saw that look, but it is a new house, replacing a house. So it would be a one-for-one. Additionally, it's designed a certain way, and it kind of heads into the applicant's, uh, hardship, which is it's designed as a ranch. And although it's got a significant amount of bedrooms, it's designed as a ranch, not for aesthetics or for, you know, uh, a vantage point of the horizon. It's designed that way because, and the applicant has given me and has authorized me to speak about a situation within his family, where his, you know, his wife has, um, has had some past medical issues specific to, um, a fall about three years ago. They currently reside on the third floor of a multifamily dwelling. They're expecting a child in the near future. It would be, uh, I believe their fifth child, if I'm not mistaken. And this applicant missed the moratorium by, within, I believe, weeks. The whole point of him designing his property, bringing it before the boards, going through all the channels that he was supposed to, was in anticipation of his wife, who's had medical issues, delivering another child and being in a situation where, um, they would not be able to live in the current situation they were in. So I would suggest to you that, as it relates to my client's hardships, um, I think he meets that standard. And again, that, I don't know the exact reason behind that standard, other than to separate you from other applicants and just separate yourself from it being financial, purely financial in nature. So, um, I would suggest my client has satisfied that prong. If you go through the rest of the factors, and again, you guys have to go through these to make your decision, um, number two talks about whether the granting the waiver will have any adverse impact into the intent behind having this moratorium. And I'd suggest to you diminish the water, uh, concern and, uh, meets the hardship, then I can't imagine that this would be adverse to the reason you guys did this. The rest of the factors, as you go through them, they don't necessarily apply to my, uh, my client. So I ask that you add in, factor in my client's ability to link into the village water supply. Looking at some of the precedent that's been set by other waivers that have been granted, I would suggest to you that my client has met all the particular needs and criteria that you guys have set forth through the original local law, the waiver, and then the additional exemptions suggested. If there's any questions you guys have about anything I've said, I'm certainly happy to answer them. We brought Mr. Hartman back because he's more familiar with the property itself, and my client is here himself to answer anything, whether it's about, um, expounding upon the medical issues and why a house is designed that way, or how the water would tap in. Certainly happy to answer that. Thank you for the time. You guys are very attentive.
All right, thank you. So when did... I know this is dated for today.
Sure.
When did we have this knowledge that the water was tied to KJ?
When did we... We... I came into this picture, uh, about three weeks ago. Meeting was two weeks ago. I started digging, making... Trying to figure out if there was any connection or availability of connections. So it was discovered probably three days, four days after this meeting. I got the agreement a couple of days after that, and then we got a letter today acknowledging it, so, you know...
The only reason I bring that up is it kind of prevents us from making a decision tonight until we can digest this one and have our attorney look into it and our water department look into it. So it kind of pushes this process.
I understand.
We kick the can, basically.
I would rather you kick the can than make a snap judgment. So I am understanding that we were scrambling to get the information in it and make sure that we understood what the information was and didn't just throw it out there. So be fine with leaving the meeting open again. I would consent to that, um, to allow you guys to digest it, to make what, you know, a diligent decision.
Okay. All right, I'll go to my board, starting with trustee Burek.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Is the current infrastructure there for them to just flip a switch and get the water from KJ?
No, it's not as simple as like attaching a hose.
So why wasn't this done in 2014, when the agreement existed?
I have no way of getting in touch with Mr. Klein to find out why he never followed through on it.
So currently, right now, there would need to be work done by the village of Curious Joel with our permission, I would assume? I don't know if this is even a thing. Yes? Okay. Can you even do this?
Hello? Okay. I think one of the things that your resolution requires you to look at or permits you to look at for, in terms of the exemption, is whether there was... That they had in place a municipal connection. And I think the answer... And that was actually gonna be my question when I turned my microphone on a minute ago, was that my understanding was that the property is currently hooked up to a well with the existing dwelling. Then I heard part of it and thought, oh, maybe it's actually this and it's continuing. But it sounds like it is hooked up to an existing well, and so that at this time, a municipal connection has not been in place.
That would be a fair statement. However, there is an existing well which has potable water, so it satisfies the either-or part of that prong already, which was presented to you all. There... The... It's just an additional option based on the suggestion that there's a potential, and the alternative was the idea that if the well ultimately does have some impact, that my client has this alternative option, that if the board said, listen, we're concerned about the well, which, okay, because it's suggested, it's not guaranteed, which, you know, to allow my client to build on the potential, we're presenting you an alternative, which is that if that is a concern, here's an alternative. So he's providing two options, and there's only two options allowed. And so I do understand Mr. Alton's point. So it's not hooked in right now, no? He's going off a well?
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, trustee Graziano at the end.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any more bedrooms currently? And do we have any more? We know there are any more bedrooms.
That would be a question for Mr. Hartman, so...
Hi, Larry Hartman from Hartman Design. So basically, the current... The current is listed as four bedrooms, and the new structure is listed as nine bedrooms.
How many square feet are you adding to that house?
Square feet? We're not adding the old one. I'm not sure there's about a square footage.
Roughly, approximate?
I have to guess. It's, uh, also one-story with a basement, um, but it's much smaller. I would guess with the basement is around 4,500, and this one is probably closer to 9,500.
Okay. So you're rating.
With the basement, again, it has a...
Five thousand. You're almost doubling the size of the home.
Correct.
Okay.
But again, it has an existing well. I've heard the concern that, um, the well is gonna... It does... It doesn't have the municipal water, so, which is one of the most important things. I mean, this whole moratorium is about water. But it has an existing well, and it had an existing well. One of the conditions is that... One of the conditions of an exemption is if you have an existing well before this moratorium got into effect.
Wait till then.
I can wait.
They knew you were talking, Larry.
Just because it's my meeting, that's why it's taking longer. There you go.
So...
All right, Mr. Hartman, you can continue.
Okay, so basically, it has an existing well, and one of the conditions of an exemption is that if it has an existing well, um, it has an existing well, I know this is gonna have more bedrooms, which means it's gonna use more water of the well, correct? And I've heard the concern that it might have adverse effect of the total water. But things needs to understand that, um, this person was... This person, um, basically had a lot about two years ago, or even more than that. We did plans. We did plans for my client. While we were doing the plans, um, the village board passed a new law regarding the rich preservation, that anything that... Anything that goes that you can see from the, um, preservation path, you need to go to the planning board. So of course, you went to the planning board, you finished designing, you went to the planning board. That is not an easy thing. It takes a lot of time. Uh, we were three, four months into it, a new law got passed, the moratorium. So he is in this for a very, very long time. He has a single-family home. He's a place in a single-family home, um, doesn't need any zoning, has everything right. He has a two... He has this two-acre, has his setbacks, has his... You know, he doesn't have municipal water. He wished he would have, he would wait if he... But he doesn't have municipal water. Now, he has... He has a right to build, basically. He has... Or he complies with everything. I do understand that the board sometimes has to take away somebody's rights for the overall good for the entire community. If there's a water issue, you somehow... You have to... You have no choice. You have to take away a person's right to build, um, in order to solve the water issue. But please take into account, the... He has an existing well, has an existing unit. The impact this will cause on the overall water for this additional five bedrooms, um, on his own well underneath his own lot is, I would say, questionable. I mean, if the overall... It's to take away a right and, uh, for somebody to build for that little impact that might cause of his own well. I mean, I understand if he has municipal water and he adds five bedrooms, I totally understand. It's simple. You pull it, even though it's a little bit, you pull some of the water out. The person has a well. I mean, underneath his own lot, has an existing well, has an existing well, it's gonna add additional bedrooms. If there's a unnecessary hardship, I think this is it. I mean, it's really unnecessary for a person to go through so much and not have the right to build just because the well that he has, the additional bedrooms, is gonna cause, possibly cause a little bit of water more. I mean, I don't think the moratorium was passed for something like that.
Continue, trustee Forelli.
Wait, you still haven't answered my question about bedrooms?
Bat... Total bedrooms? I thought you asked bedrooms. I said five from nine.
Do you have any other questions? How many are we getting?
Um, currently has three. I think we may have seven bedrooms, seven bedrooms.
Seven bedrooms? Four bedrooms?
Two of them half, but five full.
So that one is probably gonna add 110 gallons of water?
But remember, that's a well. I mean, it's a big... It's a big difference. Big difference.
Just go to CJ.
Part of your strategy, you say now that you're gonna keep it a ranch, is it?
Correct. So basically it's...
Because of hardship with the wife, but having the floor in that, how is that a hardship, whether it's a ranch or not?
But basically, a ranch, which means it's just a one-story, has one step going up, no steps inside, just a single... Just a simple, flat. And the reason he's doing that and not having a typical colonial, which you usually have, the living area, the bottom, the sleeping area on top, usually has three, probably three to four steps going up. We're not having that type of house. The reason he doesn't, he just has just one step up, flat, is because of the health concerns. You can't leave this on the third floor, which has a lot of steps, and it just doesn't work. So basically, we're building a flat, one-story, one-step walk-in type of house.
But again, we're gonna stay where the hardship is there. That's why I think...
The hardship is that the person needs to live in that house, and but he can't build it because of the moratorium.
I think it's not about whether you have a second story or first stories about the bedrooms, whether they're all on top or on the bottom. If you're adding more bedrooms and more bathrooms, that's gonna affect the water, not the...
I understand, but always, when you ever do an exemption, when...
I'll jump in. The reason being, the reason I suggested it, is it's actually one of the factors you're directed by your own law to look at, which, or we're supposed to distinguish defining what hardship is, that is not just purely financial. So it's, you know, and my understanding is there was a applicant before this board, prior to that.
I think you're confusing why, because theirs was a... Our ARB situation, they switched back so that it wouldn't have to fall under that. It takes a long time.
Oh, I thought it was about a family member who was sick or something, that's why.
Correct.
You don't have that case, so that... You guys already cleared that, no?
No, we're still on the board, I think, tonight.
But not because of the change of...
Correct. But what I tried to explain is, basically, a hardship is, um, is basically asking, even though it might add a little bit of water, we're asking for an exemption. If it doesn't add, then obviously we're not part of the moratorium.
And you guys have no idea how much little extra water you're gonna add, right?
Well, I'm just... I'm giving the numbers of bedrooms and bathrooms, but again, if it's municipal water, it's easy. There's a meter. You count, you know how much it's gonna add. But when it's entire water underneath the ground, to kind of tell the person, you was waiting already a year, you can't build because you might take from the overall water underneath your property for the additional bedrooms and bathrooms, I think that's a unnecessary hardship.
I'll leave it to the water.
All right. And well, geez, chomping at the bit to make a comment, so go ahead, trustee Graziano. There you go.
I can't hear him. He's gotta talk on the microphone. I can't hear him.
Make sure you're talking into the mic.
Yeah, you gotta talk on the microphone, CJ. We can't hear you.
I'm trying to make the phone people hear you better. So I can see without the mic works better.
Yeah, but I can't hear you. Yeah, but those can't hear you. And I gotta tell you...
Okay. Secondly, it's really misleading to say you just replaced these single-family houses with single-family houses. You're doubling... You're building two houses, where one was. You're doubling the house. You're doubling the house, twice the size. It's not adding a bedroom. It's not replacing the house. You're taking more bedrooms, taking a nine-bedroom house. Taking 4,500 square foot of property in the house. You're taking 9,500 square foot. You're building two houses.
Correct.
So that's twice the amount of water. Okay, third, it doesn't matter if it's a private well, because I'm under the impression now, unless I'm wrong, that the private well that exists is not big enough for the house to be one building. But all the water in the area, including private wells, is connected in the same area.
I understand.
It doesn't matter where you put it, it's how many shores you put it in the same place. Unless maybe it's big, but it eventually draws to a glass, I think, square. My question for Nikki Phillips, Nikki, superintendent of Phillips, if you're on the phone, is do we have provisions, any infrastructure in the area to provide municipal water for these homes in that area, right?
Uh, where does he live or where is he building?
19...
19-7 Springs, Nikki.
7 Springs?
Yes.
We have a house... We have two wells up there named River.
No, I'm saying we have water main here in 19-7 Springs.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Not at all?
I think they sure, that's why you can't do such a...
That's why he needs to connect to the...
We have water main here. So that's what I think so. My question is, how can you say it's not gonna cause any more additional water because you're doubling the bedrooms? And when you do, what are calculations? That bedrooms and bedrooms are the number ones, number six?
Correct. I'll go first real quick, and then... So just the two points. I'm answering that question, but I'm also gonna address a comment you made, and so never meant any attempt to mislead you. My... I'm an attorney, so I look at what past decisions have been made and what the set of parameters are. So the set of parameters are what they are. You use those to make decisions. That's guiding to me about how I'm attempting to present to you. So if that's taken any sort of way, my apologies. It's the way I'm advised to follow rules and go off a precedent. So if you don't call it a precedent, that's fine. It's a decision this board has made using the same set of standards. So I'm applying that set of standards. As to the water usage, the only... I'm not a... You have way more knowledge about water than I do, clearly. I'm going off of a letter from the engineer, which is part of the process, right? The petition goes eventually, goes across this board, so presumably you guys have all known that this is a nine-bedroom. So what my definition of it as a single-family going in place of a single-family, you guys have all had that information. It then goes to your village engineer, who opines on whether or not this has an impact on the water. And the only thing I have is that it appears the change in intensity of the use could increase the usage of water. So what... I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Just 100% correct.
And also could not.
No, I wouldn't say that. That's not...
Well, I...
You don't get to infer, but not included.
Actually, I mean, I will respectfully, I will leave that out there, but I'm just... The idea is, all we have is that. So I'm going off of the information that I have available to me.
All right, well, to your information, we asked the engineer, can this affect the water? So in fact, we said, yes, this could affect the water. Let's answer the question, can it affect the water? We didn't say, would it not affect the water? That's not the question we asked.
Right, I understand, but you were asking us how we can tell you that it doesn't impact the water. I'm saying if someone says it could impact the water, um, to me, that would mean the opposite, but go ahead.
Again, I don't... You probably got us wrong. We never said it's... That we're not gonna build a bigger house. That was part of the... That was part of the original application, um, back, going back from all the way back to ARB, nothing...
I'm saying, if someone says it could impact the water, um, to me, that would mean the opposite, but go ahead.
Again, I don't, I don't, you got, you probably got us wrong. Now, um, we never said it's, it's, that we're not going to build a bigger house. That was part of the, that was part of the original application, um, back, going back from all the way back to ARB, nothing changed. I did not say it's not, it might, it's not going to affect, it's not going to impact. What I was trying to say is that the impact that this is going to cause, um, is really minimal. Again, it's not like municipal water, it is a big difference. Uh, I think I told, I said it twice. I'm not saying it is just perfectly fine, and there's no right, there's no reason it should be the moratorium. That's why we're here, we ask for exemption. An exemption, the reason is that the amount that this is going to change is going to be so minimal. It's not an everyday application, that you have an existing well, an existing home, um, most of the, most of the town has municipal water, okay? And I was asking for an exemption for unnecessary hardship for a person who's waiting a year for just the minimal, in order to take away, I mean, the moratorium was not designed just to put a hold on building, it was designed for the water purpose. So, yeah, so for, so that's why, if, if there's a reason to exempt somebody, when there's such minimal potential, again, you can have five bedrooms and have more, and have more people living than you have nine bedrooms, but there is a potential of having more, more people in a nine-bedroom, therefore, there's a potential of having more water usage. But the amount of water usage, taking into account it's a well, okay, taking into account, and then denying him the right for solong, I would ask for unnecessary hardship if the board can exempt a person like that in this particular case.
And I understand your case, and I'm in the first one to defend people who have real hardships and then, and ask for waivers from the board. But I'm going to say to you that you have to understand, when you do want to use it, especially in this area, to build a parrot, where, where Harman is, where, and where we are here, and what we're talking about, this is two different places, two different, like, two different areas, two, totally responsible, just a block. You're looking at, you're looking at now, is you may be a private well, but that private well, all Woodbury, the water well, KJ's water is all well by half, fully finished enough, and your existing system, which is just several years away, they're all in the same area. And if you look at some of the comments that we've put for this village, for KJ's well, if they want to be developed, when they have real hardships, the comments are, have a negative drawdown of all wells in that area, in that exact area, in Andrew Lake. So adding a, a little bit here, a little bit there, whatever, it does have a very serious impact on the overall groundwater levels in the aquifer in that area. So it's not just because it's a private well, they're all wells, everybody's drawing from the same spot, there, there, there's no natural source of water there, that's why we're looking to bring different sources of water online, as the board is for, is to make sure that people who are existing, who have already been allocating water, if they even have water, they can bring more supply. So it's not, not affecting.
I never said that.
So this goes to private well, even if you enlarge that private well, it will have the water, there is a effect on yours, but that's fact.
Correct. That's why I'm here, I'm asking, but that, it's minimal.
You're giving this to us as an option of what the owner is wanting to get water from KJ itself, the village of KJ?
It's an alternative that he has the ability-
So how likely would that be, knowing that the well would not supersede, have enough water that supplies that current home or the future one? How likely is it that he would go out and try to get the water from KJ?
No, it doesn't even matter, it's a shell game.
Yeah.
The waters go from the same spots.
How likely?
KJ's water, they come from their wells.
And they're already having their own issues supplying water.
Can I, can I ask a question? What, in your, in the design of this law, if, if a KJ connection is going to have an issue with the aquifer, why is it one of the options? Is there an area that of, I, I'm not familiar, is there an area Woodbury, where would the tap into that would not, or would be?
Correct.
Okay.
And then one, several of them that we've seen that at the village of Harman Field, which is only, because it's part of the town of Woodbury, and it's only that section, it falls under the moratorium, but Harman's water is completely different set of content from here. So it's completely divided now, it's not the same section, it's not on the same park.
But it's in the exemptions to tap into KJ.
There's no exception to tap anything, it just says if they have different sources of water. I don't consider KJ a different source of water. KJ and us, we are, we used to tap in the same source of water. Until they get the pipeline from New York City, it's the same source of water.
I'd just ask you to review the exemption, because it says Curious Joel in there, so, and that's, again, what we're, I wouldn't have put it in front of you if I didn't think that.
Well, how likely is he to go and try to get that? Because you could just say it, oh, maybe it was, so you could just get approved, and then, oh, I'm not going to go get it, I'm just going to live off my well.
Again, if-
If you want to go and get, and come back and say you put the pipeline in KJ, you're-
Right, I want to see that as something actually connected, before we say, okay, because, you know, you could just say you're going to do this and not ever do it.
Again, I, I disagree, I just, I, it was an alternative to present to you, because
we're in front of you, rather than having my client go, tap into that pipeline, do all the work to get there, come back, and then be told, hey, appreciate the effort, but can't build, so being there, you know, so that's, that-
All right. So I don't, I don't know what I missed, but what I'd like to just comment is exactly what the exemption says, and I just, I know I repeated it before, I just want to repeat it again. And it's that if they had had in place a municipal water connection, and I think for tonight, we've established that they have not had in place a municipal water connection to the village of Curious Joel, whether they could have or not is of no moment, is whether that was in place. The other aspect of that is, um, or a private well for use as potable water at the time of the enactment. So they did have in place a private well for potable water, however, it says that upon a determination that the information is provided is accurate, and no changes in use are proposed to the property that may increase the usage of water, then they could be eligible for a hardship waiver. So I'm not sure what I missed there, but I think that talking about a connection to the village of Curious Joel right now is not before you, as trustee Graziano said, that is not the ask. The ask is for an exemption from the moratorium, and I think what the petitioner here is focused on is that they have a potable well in place, and their argument is that they do not increase the usage of water. And you're here to determine whether or not you think that they're eligible for a hardship waiver.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Anything else from our, for us, before I turn it over to the public?
Can I, do you mind if I just check with my client before?
Sure.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Chaim Oberlander. Hi, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk for you. Uh, so, basically, a couple years ago, my wife felt very bad, um, she broke one of the legs, and she had a very hard time waking up, walking upstairs. I live right now, uh, on a third floor, three flights up, it's very hard for a woman, a hard-working woman, with five children, to walk up three floors, three flights up, no elevator, no nothing. I went, I, I find that property right next to KJ, it's a flat house, uh, existing house. This, 2014, there was an agreement, and that's what the guy, when he sold me the house, he told me that I could tie up with the, get water from the village. That's what my understanding, and the village confirmed that this agreement is still accurate. I designed my house only, as you could see, as a flat house, walk-in, no flight up, she cannot walk stairs. I bought this house much more, much before the moratorium was in place, and the planning took a little bit longer than, and when we were almost finished and everything, then the moratorium kicked in. We're waiting for this so long. I have five children, you, you say, oh, you make it bigger, nine rooms. Yes, every child a separate room, I have my parents from the city coming up, coming out to me on weekends, you know, they like to come here in upstate. They using, you know, I have a younger brother also, you know, sometime he likes to come over here, it's not, it's not that, you know, it's fully used, but it's a big house, a big family, you know? The guy who lives right now in this house also has, I think he has seven children right now, over there, it's not because that's, you know, use more water and this and that, it has existing well, everything it has. I understand all your points, please, I'm waiting for this so long, my kids are home, I'm waiting to hear the good news that, that you're going to let us build us, please do it for them, for my wife. I'm asking, please, don't do it to us, I'm waiting for it so long, please, I can only ask, I did everything in the book, what needs to be done, you could let me use the own well, you want me to use KJ, I spoke today to, to KJ, and yesterday, I've said they have no issue, they let me hook up to their body of water. Uh, I don't, I don't know what else to tell you, but only please ask you nicely, please permit me do it, I need it badly, I'm waiting for it so long, I don't think I deserve it, it's two acres, it's not that I'm asking for subdivision, I want to build a couple houses, I need variance, just I take down a whole, old house, and I'm putting back a new house. I don't know if I have else, what, I want to thank you in advance, I appreciate for listening to me, thank you for everybody, appreciate, appreciate for all the, the work you do for the community, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application? I'll start with present at village hall, go ahead.
Good evening, Maria Hunter, Woodbury resident for forty-three plus years. In just looking, first of all, you have this listed as nineteen seven Springs Road. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but this is nineteen seven Springs Mountain Road. So the application does not have the correct address, and in looking in the planning board application, the SBL is wrong as well, they have five fifteen, which is supposed to be two fifteen. So, application before your, this board here now, and the planning board, there's misinformation, address is wrong, there's a wrong name, I had a hard time trying to figure out where this home was, and I'm pretty good in finding out where maps are in Woodbury. Also, in looking at the planning board rendering, let me first say, I'm, I want to say, I feel sorry for hardships for family, I understand that, been there, done that, and this board has a job to do for everyone in Woodbury. The application before the planning board shows a basement with four bedrooms, stairs going down into it, and you have the main floor. When you look at the rendering that's before the planning board, it does, it looks like a two-story building, and there's room for expansion. I know where this home is located, I know it's right on the border. In 2014, 2015, I don't recall ever, before the planning board, the zoning board, or the village board, and I'm sure council can correct me, because my history can be a little fuzzy, that the prior owners, which were the Bruces, and then the Clines, I don't ever recall having anyone coming before any of the boards requesting water into the neighboring village of Curious Joel. In the past, we had on the planning board on Baker Town Road, there was a request to put a, a water line in to property that was in Woodbury, and it was denied because, I, I would have to go back in history to find it, because they wanted to have water from Curious Joel, and there's some kind of, of decision, and it was denied, they could not take the water from Curious Joel into the village of Woodbury. So I would just ask the board to look into this, and I'm sure the council here, she's, she might know which one it might be, but there's, there's several things here, so, first of all, it's erroneous with the application address and SBL, and I think, first of all, that needs to be corrected. Everyone, it's a seven Springs Mountain Road, and it's, and I understand what the moratorium is all about, and bringing that as trustee Graziano said, when you put too many straws into the cup, someone is going to suffer along the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunter. Anyone else who is present in village hall was to speak on this application? If not, I will ask if anyone who has joined us via Zoom wishes to speak on this application? Anyone else in the public? All right, at this time, I will go to our attorney, and ask her if we have enough, do we, are we kicking this can to the next meeting to give you time, or do we have enough to proceed?
Well, I think based on the information provided and the representations made by the petitioner and his consultants, I think that we don't need to look into what was presented tonight any further, so the board can close the public hearing and deliberate authorize whatever you'd like to do.
Okay. So, at this time, I would like to, can I please have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving along. CJ, trustee Graziano, what's your pleasure, favorable or unfavorable?
For this one, I would have to unfavorable.
Okay. Trustee Ferrelli?
I agree, it's the unfavorable.
Trustee Burick?
Unfavorable.
And trustee Gomez?
Unfavorable.
All right, so I'll make it a five-oh. All right, can I please have a motion and a second to direct attorney Kelly Norton to draft an unfavorable resolution based on all that was presented this evening? Do we have a second? Seconded by trustee Ferrelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Public hearing number two, moratorium waiver petition for Twenty Center Drive Popeyes. A public hearing was continued from our May twelfth meeting due to a publication error to entertain public comments to consider a request for relief from local law nine of 2021 for a property located at Twenty Center Drive. The purpose of this public hearing is to ride the public with an opportunity to comment on the application whereby the property owner is alleging that it suffers unnecessarily or unnecessary or extraordinary hardship from the continued moratorium. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May fifth, 2022, and I will say, since the applicant presented at the last meeting, the board directed our attorney to draft a favorable response. As a formality, I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to comment on this application? And, anyone here? Okay, anyone via Zoom wish to comment on this application? Okay. So hearing no further comments from the public, can I please have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, at the end of the meeting, under all business, we will enter a favorable resolution into the public record. So, moving right along, we have our third and final waiver petition for ninety-five Mayor Lane. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comment to consider a request for relief from local law nine of 2021. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the application whereby the property owner is alleging that it suffers unnecessary hardship from the continued moratorium. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May twenty-four, 2022, and is the applicant present?
Yes.
Nope, there you go.
Hello, uh, I'm Johnny Chu, I represent Yeni LLC, um, we're requesting a hardship.
Can you repeat your name once again?
Oh, Johnny Chu.
Johnny Chu.
J-O-H-N-Y, last name C-H-U.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, uh, so, uh, we're, we're requesting a hardship, um, what do you want to call it? Uh, we have two properties, uh, one, uh, one store wants to open up, but he can't get a building permit, uh, due to the moratorium, and then another property, uh, wants to expand, um, but can't get that building permit as well. Um, the property is using a private well, um, which, uh, I believe I sent you proof of, uh, if not, I have one copy in hand.
No, we have it in case.
Um, but this was given to us by the, uh, building department, like, right over there. And so, yeah, uh, come before you today to try to get these tenants their building permits so they can open up their stores or, and expand their stores.
What are you exactly to the applicant?
Um-
The architect, designer, what are you, what is your title?
Uh, property manager.
Property manager. Okay. CJ, why don't you start us off?
But this was given to us by the building department, like right over there. And so, yeah. Come before you today to try to get these tenants their building permits so they can open up their stores or and expand their stores.
What are you exactly to the applicant? The architect, designer? What are you, what is your title?
Property manager.
Property manager. Okay. CJ, why don't you start us off?
If I'm not mistaken, yeah, our consultant has said that you were looking at adding seats.
One of them was Diceball. They're expanding the store to next door. It is adding seats, but it's mainly so we can host like party, birthday parties and whatnot without having to rearrange the whole store. So like in terms of customers, right now, like we haven't, we don't consistently. I also own Diceball, the restaurant in question. We don't hit like maximum capacity where we, we like need more space to get. It's just more of a convenience thing where we can, so I kind of want to. In regards of usage, I think it's gonna be the same because I still have the same amount of people coming in.
So from my perspective, before I can even think about deciding on this application, I would need some sort of study from you stating, you know, this is the increase in amount of people that are coming in here. This is the increase in maximum capacity of the restaurant. This is gonna be the increase or decrease or remain the same over the course of the year. If you're feeling, if I feel like I want to trust you, it's not good, it's not scientific empirical evidence that
Okay.
So that's something I would need and I would request from you before I can make a decision on this one.
Can I, are these two separate businesses, or is this one expansion of one business into two storefronts?
Expansion of one business into two storefronts. The application was on the landlord, so the entire shopping mall. Because that was my understanding where we're applying the the waiver to the property, not each individual store.
Do you have an idea of the size of the store you are expanding into?
It's roughly twenty by forty. I might be off by a few feet.
Are you adding any more bathrooms to this?
No, it's all existing bathrooms. So like the only thing I'm doing construction wise is putting a door between the two properties. Yeah.
Did the other property have its own bathroom also?
Yes.
So you two have the same two bathroom use?
Yeah. They're plumbing wise, like nothing is being done.
You guys maybe doing anything that you can watch that?
I mean, we have all of that already in place because when we redid the store, we swapped all the toilets just because to decrease the water bill as well. Regarding the water for the restaurant, we get all our water from Walmart or from the, those companies that do like five times filtration mainly because when I use the well water, I can't get the taste that I want, so I, I use outside water. So regarding like all the properties, all the water usage just comes from washing hands, washing dishes, and the toilet. Well, I mean, just decreasing the amount of water usage in general. Yes, I understand. It's misspoke on my behalf. What do you call it? Regarding, we don't pay. Regarding the well, the only thing we pay is the maintenance of it, which is like the chlorine and that kind of stuff. But restaurant wise, what do you call it? The water is covered in our rent, but because I also work on the property management side, like I try to keep our water usage as low as possible and all that stuff. Just because ill maintenance on the whole system is like a little easier. Yeah. Okay. Yes.
And the wells will be able to support, you're not increasing anymore, you, you should do that.
I don't expect to.
Don't expect. There's a chance. And it does increase the water.
Well, I believe so. I mean, I don't expect like just the space to just drive up my business all of a sudden. I mean, that'd be great if it did happen, but I don't expect like a big enough impact where it would substantially affect my water usage.
You okay, Vic?
Are you an engineer?
I am a, I did study as a mechanical engineer, and then I worked as a nuclear engineer for two years with GE before I walked away and opened a board game cafe.
So if you could produce something scientific with water usage now versus what's proposed and present it, I think you'll have a better case versus you saying, I don't think it's going to because
Right now, I'm like regarding like getting empirical evidence for that, that would have involved me tracking my water from a period of time, which I guess if I, I know there's a meter on there, I can see. Okay, so I know we do record our water usage over a long amount of time because we have to submit it to someone. I forgot which governing body, so yes, that's part. But and so I could, I have that history of water usage. And then I guess I do know the village lawyer did do a proposed water usage study as part of
It would be the village engineer.
Yes, the village engineer, pardon my language. Yeah, I have, I can find out exactly who it is, but she did
It's okay.
the water study because regarding the zoning, there was some kind of inquiry with the sewage. So she had
So it's a part of your planning board application, this, this, okay, so we have to talk to Natalie?
Yeah, it's Natalie. Okay. Okay. I may ask to speak with you beforehand, later on, just because that was really quick. That I couldn't really record it.
Yeah.
I feel that that calculation has already been done, but I can get it to you guys. We're going to go to that stuff.
Now, your restaurant, the both storefronts were restaurants? What you're expanding?
No.
One was a restaurant, one wasn't?
One was a fast food takeout. The one next door, I believe, was a doctor's office? Or a nail salon? I have to go look up my records.
With the restaurant, how many? How many ceilings did you have? Or was it just takeout? Was it any sit down?
Yes, so it's fifteen seats. Because it's also a board game, it's a board game cafe, so we have like table space for you to play board games. Uh, yes. Yes, I understand.
You're gonna increase the amount, but you're gonna keep the same one bathroom on both sides of the restaurant?
Yes.
And you use your own private water to cook? Is that what you said?
Uh, no, I use all the water from like those five gallon pulling spring jugs.
Is it a taste?
Yeah. Because like the well water has a certain taste to it that I can't
It's a round earthy.
Yeah. So like any cooking wise, it's all like purified water that's from an outside source. No, no. Yeah. Well, it's a takeout, so it's all disposable. The only thing I'd be washing is just the cooking equipment.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, I'll go out to the public. And when from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Via Zoom? I'll start there. Virtually? No? Okay, anyone present wishing to speak on this matter? Okay. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed, okay. Moving along. Do I have a, okay, let's go to the board and find out how they wish to move forward on this. So trustee Graziano, favorable or unfavorable?
I don't have enough information, that's why I would, as opposed to closing the public hearing, I need further information and what you presented than information in public, you also hear that information. That was my thought process, and then we can kind of make a more informed decision once that information is available, be available to us, the board and the public. But you close a public hearing, so in that, you're I, I can't begin, I cannot go in favor, I could not be in favor of this without further information.
Okay, thank you. Vic?
That's a good point. But the fact that he's not adding anything, not expanding the bathrooms or the kitchen, I think, I think we go favorable.
Okay. Trustee Buick?
I agree with Vic, favorable.
Trustee Gomez?
I'm also favorable.
And I'm also favorable. So can I have a motion and a second to direct attorney Norton to draft a favorable resolution for ninety-five Mayor Lane?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, moving right along. Introductory local law three of twenty twenty-two, fire prevention. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comment on introductory local law three of twenty twenty-two, which would amend chapter one five four of the village code entitled Fire Prevention to provide for requirement for the installation of Knox Box. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May twenty-fourth. So, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this introductory, introductory local law three? That Kelly spent hours coming up with the name fire prevention? Anyone here present? Anyone via Zoom virtually wishing to speak on this? Okay, so we have not received comment back from the planning board, which will take up the matter at tomorrow's meeting. So at this time, we should continue the public hearing to the next meeting. Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing? All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving along. Local law four of twenty twenty-two, which passed tonight, will become local law three. So we'll make those adjustments. Called video conferencing. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comment on introductory local law four of twenty twenty-two, which would authorize the public bodies to use video conferencing technology to participate in public meetings. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May twenty-fourth. So at this time, I will ask the public if anybody wishes to comment on local law four of twenty twenty-two, video conferencing? Anyone virtually? All right. Can I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Buick, trustee Gomez with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I now have, can I please have a motion and a second to adopt local law four?
Three.
Which will become three, entitled Video Conferencing.
I'll second.
Second it. All right, roll call.
Mayor Jacomaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Buick?
Aye.
Trustee Furelli?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
If you guys sat alphabetically, it would be more helpful.
It would kind of difficult. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's done, passed. All right, moving right along to public comment on agenda items only. So does anyone wish to speak on anything that is on the agenda that remains? Hearing no one, I will move right along. All right, I'm looking for a motion and a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on May twelfth.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Second it, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of abstract. Desiree, will you please read abstract twenty-two?
Abstract twenty-two contains vouchers twenty-one, twenty-one ninety-six through twenty-one, twenty-three forty-five, and totals eight hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
All right. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the abstract? Abstract twenty-two is read. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, fire department equipment requests. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the following department equipment request? Twenty twenty-two dash seventeen totaling approximately eight hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents for the purchase of one pager for the chief.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Re levy of previously exempt properties, notice of which is on our website and will be presented in the minutes. Can I please have a motion and a second to re levy previously exempt properties as presented? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. All right, can I please have a motion and a second to approve the application for membership to the Woodbury Fire Department Highland Mills Company received from Matthew Hetty pending a physical? I'll make the motion. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Almost, all right, moving along. All right, decision, moratorium waiver petition for five Allegheny Cross. Desiree, well, you please read the terms and the conditions of the moratorium waiver. All right, let's, can I please have a motion and a second to adopt resolution as presented granting the applicant's petition for waiver for five Allegheny Cross? Anybody?
I'll make the motion.
There you go. Any discussion?
Who's second?
Second to Vic, yep. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, moving along again, can I please have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as presented granting the applicant's petition for waiver for Twenty Center Drive?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. All right, new business. Appointment to the planning board with the term beginning June first, twenty twenty-two. Can I please have a motion and a second to reappoint Evan Yan to the planning board, the term to begin June first, twenty twenty-two, and expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven? Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
And we've got four and one abstention. So on behalf of the board, we thank Evan Yan for his dedication to the community and thank him for once again applying. Okay, appointment to the zoning board of appeals, term beginning June first, twenty twenty-two. Can I please have a motion and a second to appoint Ed DeJesus, Edward DeJesus, to the zoning board of appeals? to the zoning board of appeals with a term to begin June first, twenty twenty-two, and expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, okay.
That was CJ?
CJ, yep. All right, moving along. Authorize me, the mayor, authorize me, the mayor, to sign the agreement for aerial testing. Um, this item has been tabled to our next meeting to give our attorney time to review said agreement. Yep, two nays, okay.
I did review it and I had some comments with the fire chief. Ooh, sorry. I did review it and I had some comments with the fire chief, so we're just gonna try and work through some of those before we bring it back to the board.
Okay, very good, thank you. Tabled for now. Uh, we have one additional item. Can I please have a motion in a second to accept with regrets the resignation of Brady Del Vecchio from the Village of Woodbury's Revitalization Committee?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any additional new business from the board? Nothing, okay.
You want to sign their things now?
Yes, I can.
No.
Youngsters. Future of America, come forward.
I need his resignation too.
Uh, yes, I'll.
You read it to me, but you didn't send it to me. Sorry, I can't, when I was working.
I'll do it, I got it.
Yeah, he has, he's supposed to do it.
All right, at this time while I sign these, if anyone from the public wishes to speak, who is here present, please take yourself to the podium. There you go, young man, here, take this, that's mine. Oh, there you go, there you go. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Melissa Jackson. I'm a newer resident to Woodbury. I live at forty-eight Hadley Farm Road. And this is my fiance, Nikhil. And we are wanting to dive into this community. But we come here today out of just a little bit of confusion, obviously trying to figure out between our house is in the village, but around our house, we have town property. So that's where there can be a little bit of confusion. I live across the street from forty-seven Hadley Farm Road, which is currently being used as a shul. There have been plans, um, presented to the planning board. I'm sorry, you were gonna say something. Um, and the recent transactions that have been up there, they've just, this past week, put a road that passes through from Woodbury Junction to the shul. Um, I do not know, I mean, I have a beat point, a list that I presented to the planning board uh, last year, but I think it probably got mixed in with all of the different politicians. You know, moving offices, Gary was leaving, um, I dropped them off. And I don't know if it's best for me to present the issues that we're having up there, invite you guys up to the house, or if you would like me to tell you the issues now, or I can, I'd gladly send you the letter. I just don't want, I just want to do everything the right way, and present it to you in the most professional way.
All right, so just, just so I know what we're dealing with.
Yes.
So you have, I, I, I know where you live exactly, you live on Hadley Farm Road.
I do.
Ross Street is a, um, shul, but it's not really a shul yet.
Well, they're, correct.
Yes.
It's not, it's not, it hasn't been zoned, and that's the biggest problem. We're, we're running into almost head-on collisions. It's, it's very, very dangerous right now, because it's a full-on commercial property, which is owned for residential. So it's, it's, uh, it's a little crazy up there.
Okay, so you're saying that a road was built through Forever Green space up there, or the buffer zone that it, that exists up there?
So, so when you go up Hadley Farm, right now that there's been a boulder up there for about five years that Gary and the building department have put there for safety. Um, so next to that boulder, there's a wetland area with a wooded fence, and then there's also an electrical pole. And so during that time, since there was not that pass-through, they made a small little path. Right? Okay, whatever. Well, on Memorial Day, they cut down the fence, push the, move the fence back around the wet area, have two massive asphalt shale dumped, and they cut down the trees and they plowed it, and then they put the fence back. And so now cars are driving through Woodbury Junction, through town property, back to village property.
This happened yesterday?
This happened on Memorial Day. I guess, yeah, I'm sorry, it's, I'm a little, I'm a little frazzled, yes, that is correct. And I have, you know, I've got pictures. So this happened, and I've got videos, I've got pictures, I spoke with.
I know.
Have you sent all of this to Mike Pennella, who is on Zoom?
This just happened, so I haven't even had a chance to be like, hey, Mike. So this is the first, so this is.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, I would first suggest that you send everything you have to, uh, Mike Pennella, our building, he's the new building inspector, so when you last dealt with this, it was Gary Tommbergger.
Yes.
I would send it to Mike.
Great.
And then what I will do is follow up with a conversation with Mike, and actually the, uh, not the HOA, but the management for WP three, and see if they were aware that this was done.
Yeah, they were aware, because they were there when that was happening.
The WP three management was there?
With a gentleman by the name of Maury.
Maury, okay.
I mean, I have a, I have a friendly relation with the people that, you know, over, you know, they're at forty-seven and, you know, trying to make it, you know, peaceful for everybody, even though it's not legal right now, so, um, you know, we're just trying to live our life and be peaceful and, but at the same time, it gets a little bit crazy in the wintertime, trying to get up the street when there's cars are trying to get down with our garbage and we can't get down with our garbage.
Did you say they also cut down trees and wetlands?
That's correct. Do you know, I mean, I don't know if I'm actually, um, specifying that area correctly, but I believe it is the wetland.
You have the giant rock there, you have the big rock.
Giant rock is still there, correct?
Well, that's been moved to a smaller boulder because they wanted better path.
Who gave them that authorization?
They don't have that authorization, that happened after Gary left. So, and then secondly, um, the owner of one fifteen Rose Lawn, which is the, there's the two blue, blue homes off of Rose Lawn, up goes Hadley Farms. So he decided he wanted to string lights up Hadley Farm Road. So he just strung lights, which to me, my family's in construction, I'm originally from Detroit. It looks like a very, could be a fire hazard, I mean, they're just, they're not solar, they're not proper, they're not proper lights.
Where is he plugged into? How does that even work?
That's a great, that's a great question. I, I looked, um, I did make, I did write to Michael, and again, he's had so much stuff to, you know, to catch up on, and they said, you know, that's, that's our property. Well, no, his property line, he probably has a quarter acre on the corner, he doesn't have all the way up Hadley Farm Road. So that's, that's another issue. Our third issue is with seventy-two Southfield Falls, which that is behind our house. We do have a pool. That house was built a few years after that we had been there. And last summer, I saw them putting a large tarp from all of my trees on my property because they couldn't see me and my pool. Apparently that's, um, not becoming of their vision, I get it. So they put in a permit and said that they would be building three wood sheds, which is illegal for them, legal for them to do. Now, our backyard is a, is a slope. They have built up, which obviously that is legal, and then they have their, um, four-foot fence. Now, on top of that four-foot fence, they have probably about a fifteen to twenty-foot shed, shed that they call it, but I don't see it as a shed, it's a wall going about this wide. And it goes above the fence. So the reason why this area is open right now is unfortunately during the Ida storm, we lost all of those trees. I mean, the trees went into the pool, I mean, it was, so they have a hole, um, there. Um, I did write Michael about that, and he said that they do have permits and they're waiting to do the final inspection. Now, I'm concerned about a hazard about that shed wall taking another topple when, you know, we get some other crazy storms again. I think that that's above the allotted, uh, foot that you can have in your backyard. And I had wanted Michael to come out to see that before the inspection. The last I had, um, touched base with Michael was in December of twenty twenty-one, and he says he was waiting for them to finish. This started last August, and it's only still been wood, so I just think they're just using it as a wall to block. And I don't know if it's ever gonna get done.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I.
No, 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 you're, you're, you're giving us information that we would not have any other way.
Yeah, and I'm trying to, and I'm trying, and I'm, I'm trying to just be very neutral and just, just, these are, just stating the facts. Um, I would invite you guys all up, um, to my property to come and see exactly what's going on, because honestly, I do not think that everybody knows what's going on up there.
We understand it, I think, you know, there and you know the structure of that, you can't, you know, regardless of the permit, the sheds are not, um, that's totally the plan, but you can't build your own roads and cover your own lights.
Well, that's, yeah, that, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, just what you want, some more, some, some more roads.
All right, I will address it with the building inspector tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Of all three issues, which is the, the road, one fifteen Rose Lawn with the lights, and then seventy-two Southfield with the, fence that's been, not even a fence, like a wood wall that's been constructed.
I'm happy to email you guys whatever is best pictures, but I've also emailed the building department as well, so they have all that.
I'll get them from Mike Pennella, and then what I'll do is I'll share that to the rest of the board so that they're kept in loop.
Yeah, the blue one, right?
Correct.
That's, that's right.
Melissa, do you know if, um, Michael got the pictures? Because our, our server, depending on the size, will block incoming things.
Oh goodness, well then.
Did he come, did he reply back that he received them, or?
Um, he replied back to me, and he's aware, but I would, I would gladly send them over again in the morning, is there a better way for me to send them?
It, it's just our computer server will only allow so much data to come across. It's a security issue, so that we're not,
Okay.
you know, stamed or anything like that. So maybe a flash drive or some type of medium that you can drop off this way? And I, I mean, he's on here, so I don't know if he can comment whether or not he did receive them or not. I'm just curi-, you know, depending on how many it is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's a good idea.
I know video takes up a lot of space and whatnot, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea, we can drop off a flash drive tomorrow, that's fine. Not, not a problem. Then, then you, everybody can just plug it in and call it a day, you don't have to worry about downloading the PDF. Um, and I think that is all, uh, that I have, bear with me one moment, thank you so much. And I guess this is something that I'll take up with the planning board tomorrow, some of the accuracy of the architectural plans that they have put in for forty-seven Hadley Farm and my home are wrong. They say the sidewalk is a driveway. Um, the, um, environmental assessment form, the answers on there are wrong. But again, I'm sorry, I'm new to all of this, so I probably should be resigning to the planning board. And I'm just like, we're trying to dive into the community, and I'm like, oh, I don't want to stand up there and complain, but, you know, we want to.
But you sat through that entire meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was very fascinating. We, we're also here to help, like, I have a, I have a nonprofit. We're here to help the community as well, we're not here to just to complain, so, you know, if you guys are giving me help with anything, again, we're newer to the community, we want to make it better, we're, we love Woodbury, so thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
First of all, I want to thank the entire board for participating in the Memorial Day Parade. I truly appreciate the effort that the entire board was there. The parade went off well, and I would be remiss if I, there's so many people to thank, but one of the people is sitting in the room, and he's in charge of the village highway department. I think his name is Rob Wyatt. His men that were there, Steve and Joey and Dave?
Sheila was there, right?
Sheila was there, that's right, and so there were, so I want to thank everyone for helping making this parade a great parade this year. And there were a lot of people along Route thirty-two that were there, and I was very impressed the amount of people that came to the back of the cemetery to witness the ceremony. It was really impressive, so thank you to everyone on that. Second, um, maybe Melissa needs to go to the town board for a property that was stolen from them with a road on it. That is, I was on the, years ago, that's open space for the town. There's supposed to be a five to ten-foot buffer around the entire WP three.
Was that part of the formation of the village? That buffer zone as it was dedicated to the town?
Yes, I think it was. Yes.
So before the formation of the village, that buffer zone, the approvals for that created that buffer zone?
And where that huge rock is, was, now it's a smaller rock, there used to be a gate there for fire matic, for fire trucks, if there, other entrance was. I understand why the rock was put there, but if they went and cut trees down on town property. Paved the road? Paved or whatever material they put on it, I mean, there's a town board meeting this week?
Yes.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday, today's still Tuesday. So, but I'm appalled at hearing what's going on up there. I mean, I know it's a private road, and I know everyone's busy, but this, this, it has to stop. I don't know where, where it's going to stop. And to have those lights going up from one oh five, I'm sure it's electrical cords that are coming from someone's house, and if it's not done properly, we're gonna have a fire somewhere. And someone's house is gonna go down. I think that is it. I got Rob, I got the highway. Boom, I'm good, everyone.
Thank you, Maria. And as you know, Maria, I am legally obligated to mention how Woodbury has the best Doshgon Highway Department at every meeting. So, thank you, Rob Wyatt, once again. All right, anyone from the public via Zoom? I don't think so, virtually, that wishes to speak? There's Ed DeJesus, go ahead. Oh, I have Rachel. Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. And anyone, anyone else virtually wish to speak? No? All right, Rachel, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everybody, Rachel Bruce, uh, Villa, uh, Village of Woodbury resident. I just wanted to quickly, I don't want to repeat anything, it's already been said, but I just want to thank the board for their vote on local law four, technically a local law three. I think anything that we can do to make government more transparent and accessible is vital to the health of this community, so I thank you for that, and I think this is a great move in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel. All right, moving right along, department head comments. Starting with Rob Wyatt. Nothing, Mickey Phillips? Anything?[1744.24]